I call this meeting of the work session of the Portsmouth City Council scheduled for today, May the ninth, to order. Madam Clark, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Cherry, Mr. Clark.
Here.
Mrs. Lucas Burke.
Here.
Mr. Moody.
Here.
Ms. Simmons.
Here.
Dr. Whitaker. Mayor Rowe.
Here. Dr. Patton.
Thank you, sir. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of City Council, since September 2017, the city's budget team has worked tirelessly to prepare for the presentation of the proposed FY 2018 budgets, presented on March 27, 2018. In an effort to provide our citizens with a transparent budget process, which included our guiding principles of continual evaluation of programs and services, an overview of key financial benchmarks, and a key strategic focus areas, we hosted three community engagement forums in various sectors of the community. The surveying or polling of the citizens' response were utilized as a tool to provide City Council with a ranking of strategic community services for FY 2018 budget process. During our public work sessions from late March through tonight, the FY 2018 budget calendaring provided opportunities for detailed presentations and discussions with City Council on budget strategic focus areas to include employee compensation, education, revenue sources, and realignment of fees and rates, capital improvement program projects, CDBG and home programs, fund balance and financial policies. And Mrs. Alice Kelly, Chief Financial Officer, presented on April 24, 2017, the mid-year of 2017 budget financial report or review. During each of the public work sessions, City Council's questions, staff's responses to various questions while in the meeting, but questions that we had to come back with, were brought back to you with detail in a questions-report-back document format. During tonight's City Council public work session, no, during tonight's City Council meeting, the city's manager's report consists of the CMR for the various 2018 budget adoption items. Mrs. Gloria Washington, Budget Officer, will come forward and provide an overview of the operating budget and capital improvement program budget ordinances. Mrs. Washington.
Mayor Rowe, Vice Mayor Cherry, and members of City Council. This evening, I will provide an overview of the FY 2018 operating and CIP budget ordinances and resolutions, which will be presented for your consideration for adoption at the City Council meeting this evening at 7:00 PM. Presented in the city manager's report dated May 9, 2017, are 13 ordinances and two resolutions required to support the adoption of the FY 2018 operating and CIP budget. As Dr. Patton has reiterated, on March 27, 2017, the city manager presented the proposed FY 2018 operating and capital improvement budget to City Council. The city has met all of the legal requirements for adoption of the operating and CIP budget with respect to City Council work sessions in March and April, advertisements for the public hearing, and the actual public hearing, which was held on April 25. Also included in the city manager's report is background information for the 2018 Community Planning and Development Annual Action Plan for the authorization of the Community Development Block Grant Entitlement Grant and the Home Investment Partnership Entitlement Grant. The first ordinance is the adoption of an ordinance to reenact ordinance number 2016-31 to impose a levy on taxes for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2017, and ending June 30, 2018. The real estate tax rate stays the same at $1.30 per $100 of assessed valuation. This aligns with our budget citizen engagement survey results of no new taxes, in which 53 percent of our citizens reiterated that point. The next ordinance is an adoption of an ordinance to amend Appendix A for the rates for the water and sewer services. Residential water from $4.75 per 1,000 gallons to $4.99 per 1,000 gallons, and residential sewer charges from $3.72 per 1,000 gallons to $3.91 per $1,000. These rates were last increased in FY 2012, and these funds will address aging infrastructure, increased maintenance costs, as well as expanding federal and state regulations. The next ordinance is adoption of an ordinance to amend Appendix A to decrease the monthly service charge for collection and disposal of trash and garbage, from $33.36 per month to a decrease to $30.16 per month. The next ordinance is adoption of an ordinance to amend Appendix A to increase storm water utility fees from $9.25 per equivalent residential unit to $10.50 per equivalent residential unit. This fee last increased in fiscal year 2013, and this funding will be utilized to address flooding projects and to improve water quality. The next ordinance is adoption of ordinances, and these are five separate ordinances, to amend Appendix A and reordain various chapters of the city code for permit and inspection fees, permit rate language, subdivision, and other application and review fees, fees for food truck permit applications, and fire, rescue, and emergency services fees to cover cost of services and promote service efficiency. The next ordinance is adoption of an ordinance, adopting the FY 2018 Classification and Pay Plan for the employees of the City of Portsmouth. The next is adoption of a resolution approving the Community Planning and Development 2018 Annual Action Plan for the City of Portsmouth. The next ordinance is adoption of an ordinance approving the fiscal year 2018 operating budget for the Portsmouth Public Schools in the amount of $192,985,789, and appropriating the necessary funds by classifications to implement the grant fund category of said budget for the entire fiscal year 2018, and the remainder of said budget for the first quarter of fiscal year 2018. The next ordinance is adoption of an ordinance approving the fiscal year 2018 through 2022 Capital Improvement Program, and appropriating $43,378,713 in the fiscal year 2018 Capital Improvement Fund, and $6,104,000 in the fiscal year 2018 Public Utilities Capital Improvement Fund. It is noted that funds totaling $80,088 from Project Harbor Center Pavilion are proposed to be reallocated to CIP Project Outdoor Recreation Facility Replacement for lighting and ball field improvements. Funds totaling $550,000 for CIP Project Facility Assessment Plan are proposed to be reallocated to a CIP project entitled Woodrow Wilson Cooling Towers. And funds totaling $500,000 are identified as project closeout funding from Project 801 Water Street for Project Public Safety Facilities Plan. These revisions maintain the same appropriation total for the FY 2018 Capital Improvement Program. The next ordinance is adoption of an ordinance to appropriate $431,386,588 for the operation of city government during the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2017. And this appropriation ordinance excludes the Capital Improvement Fund and Portsmouth Public Schools because those are separate ordinances. The last resolution is adoption of a resolution declaring that the full-time paramedic positions of the Emergency Medical Services Division are an integral part of the official safety program within the meaning of the Virginia Line of Duty Act. This concludes my review of the operating and CIP budget ordinances and resolutions. I will be glad to answer any questions related to this overview, and thank you.
Before I open this up for questions from council, I want to, I commend the city manager and her budget staff for the very methodical way that you have brought us along on the budget process. It's been very informative, very analytical. You've answered all of our questions that we have posed, and you have stayed focused. We set out this budget season with one agenda at these work sessions, and that was the budget. And now we're here at the night where we're considering the adoption. And again, I thank you, your staff, for the hard work that you put into not only the development of the budget, but especially for bringing us along. Now, I'll open it up for questions from council. Yes, sir.
I have a question. It's not really a question, but a request. Can you get a copy of your statement before our meeting at 7:00?
Which statement?
The statement you just read. Can you get a copy of it before our 7:00 meeting?
Sure. On all the ordinances?
Yes, everything you just read.
Yes, sure.
Respect.
Thank you, sir. I'm confused just about maybe terminology or grammar.
Okay.
And I'm on O on the schools. But, no, it's talking about the grant fund, where it's talked about the grant fund for the year, like, the rest of it isn't for the year. I didn't understand why it said that.
The grant fund is being allocated for, initially for July 1 through, July 1 through June 30 of the next year, but the other funds are being allocated on a quarterly basis, and it's very similar to what we did last year.
Thank you.
Yes.
Got it.
All right. For a matter of procedure, when we get to item F, which really is five separate ordinances, correct? Okay, we'll take each of those five individually. So we'll take the first ordinance in F. You're looking at me funny.
They are separate ordinances for this review. I just agreed to put all of those together, but you do have five separate ordinances for each of those subject areas.
Under F.
Yes.
And so, Madam Clark, I'll ask you to read each option individually when we get to F.
Yes.
And we'll consider it one ordinance at a time. Okay? Wait on board?
Yes. If you're going to do that, can you make sure that the agenda is changed to show that those are going to be separate votes? Because as it is now, it's just one vote.
They're not separate votes.
I don't think it's that way.
They're not separate.
No, it's just one vote.
Well, the mayor just asked that they be broken out.
Well, pleasure. What is the recommendation of our city attorney?
See, F has all of them under one. This is important. But these are the...
Mayor, you have a singular ordinance.
Just one.
Because of one ordinance.
It's all of those topics. They're not, while it's five different topics, they're all under one ordinance. There's not five separate ordinances. It's only one ordinance that covers all five of these topics.
It's all Appendix A.
Yes.
It's all Appendix A.
She just explained.
I just explained.
Okay. Good.
Yeah, so it's only one. It's not five separate.
You should just explain that.
That's why I was looking at you like.
Well, I misheard what you said.
Yeah, I was thinking in my presentation, I had categorized everything together.
All right. When we get to F, we'll have, I'll ask you to read the caption of the ordinance.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
And we'll consider a motion for adoption, and we'll go from there.
Yeah. That's the same for all of them.
Yes.
Mm-hmm. We're good.
All right. Discussion, questions?
On the, on the, this is L. How much, so this is appropriate, all the money for schools for...
Correct, yes.
So how do I, what makes up the hours?
Pardon?
How do I differentiate the city's local share?
The city's local share?
Yeah.
The 52.4 million? That is part of, it's included in transfers and contingencies in the operating budget, but it's also shown in the cities, in the schools budget, under, I'm not sure, local share commitment, but that is included in transfers and contingencies and non-departmental in our operating budget. And then they also show that as a source in the schools budget also.
So I guess if we try and look at this, break out this ordinance and find it, what...
You can find it on the city side. The local share is part of our operating budget. It is in our operating expenditures under transfers and contingencies. You would probably need to look at the schools detail regarding their operating budget, their revenues and sources.
But it's in, but it is not in here. You just can't...
Yes, sir. It's over.
Pull it up.
Wouldn't it be more clear, though, if it showed the city's portion of that, the 52.4, and have a total for the public certification?
It's broken out in the budget of which...
I understand, but...
All they're going to get is this right here.
Yeah.
So broken down in the ordinance?
Yeah.
By the type of...
Just be more clear.
Right here. So it's 192. So you have all of the different revenues and all the different funds in there.
What you would...
But where's the 52?
What you would do, subtract the local share from the school general fund, and then put a new line item under that saying, "local fund."
Take it out of the 144.
Can you do that?
Yes.
We could get that done quickly.
We could do that.
That'd be good. Is that a consensus of council?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, well, let's...
We could get that. I mean, we have time to do that.
All right. And have copies available for the public. Other questions?
Maybe it was answered earlier during our discussions, and maybe for this, what is the, what's the $878,000 increase in IT, in operating budget?
Information technology charges. Here.
If you're looking in your book, it's five, I guess it's five, two, two, five dash two, two.
He can speak here.
You're actually talking about the information technology fund?
Right.
And you looked at the comparison.
It's on 520, 522, of the operating expenses.
Okay. That's where the adopted budget was 4.3, and we went to 5,71.
I'm looking at the operating, the operating, Mrs. Lyon.
I know that part of that is for major equipment and software purchases for IT, trying to get us to the next level regarding data and equipment.
Mr. Jones is there.
And Mr. Jones could probably get more specific details on it.
Yes, Mr. Jones. He's on the line. Okay.
Good evening, council. The increase in the operating expenses is to include the cloud hosting environment for our financial ERP software, as well as a permanent inspection software purchase.
So this is going to be a permanent $878,000 increase, a yearly increase?
Yeah, that's an annual renewal.
About 800, almost $900,000 in one year?
The two software purchases make up roughly about 400,000 to 500,000, and that will be the reoccurring part of it. And the other expenses were the bandwidth increases with our local ISP to provide connection to other parts of the city that would connect back to City Hall.
So how much is recurring?
Well, I mean, the entire part of it will be recurring, but that's just the breakdown part of it.
$2,490, $2,490,000 a year. I mean, $2,490,000 a year.
And that's addressing, as we have called to council's attention, City Hall, in just this last year, now has the internet. And we have other entities, buildings, facilities, of which will be a part of bringing not only those facilities, this facility, the safety and security of cloud hosting, which we're just actually catching up with the technology phase of municipal government.
Right. Those initiatives that she was talking about is the Wi-Fi that is now at City Hall that we want to extend to the other municipal buildings.
The Wi-Fi don't cost that much.
We're dealing with the wiring and all that has had to be done in just this building.
All right. Did your question get answered?
I got an answer, but I guess I'm up to, because I knew it, it don't cost that much.
I mean, we can provide a breakdown of each individual one.
All right.
Okay.
Okay.
It's almost too...
Other questions? Other questions? All right. Moving off the budget, we do have a public hearing tonight, and it is on the zoning ordinance. And this is the patch. Dr. Patton, you want to explain that? And I'll ask you, at the start of the public hearing, right before I open the public hearing, to explain to the public what that's about.
And then I will introduce Mr. Baldwin, who will go into detail on the parts.
Right. But this is that. The ordinance that came out of our joint meeting with the Planning Commission that took place on February 17, which we had a unanimous consent of those people present on both council and the planning commission to redo our zoning ordinance and to develop a workaround in the short term.
And I have my notes here.
Okay.
Mayor, which I will share for tonight's meeting. On February 3 to 4, City Council holds a retreat there by identifying strategic priorities, the four big things of which revise, revoke, form-based code is the second at the top of the list. And on February 16, a joint meeting was held with the Planning Commission to discuss the strategic approach that will be realized to achieve the goal of revising, revoking, and addressing the form-based code. And tonight, the first major step will be taken through the public hearing. It's already gone through the Planning Commission, and Mr. Baldwin will come forward then to explain.
Let's go to council liaison reports, and I'll start from my left.
I'll give my, Military Affairs Committee is very pleased that at the meeting coming up, we haven't had it yet in May, that the State Secretary for Veterans Affairs will be joining us because he's heard about the good works of the meeting of the group. So we're looking forward to having him as a guest. Of course, the committee's sole focus right now is on the Memorial Day Parade, which is on Memorial Day, May 29, at 10:00 AM. It will be followed this year, you'll recall, in the last two years, we had a, what we called a solemn ceremony just after the parade over in the courtyard at High Court honoring Vietnam veterans who were killed or missing in actions because of the 50th anniversary of the Vietnam War. That period is now over, and so we will still have a solemn ceremony, but it will be for, not for any particular war. And we'll have the echo taps and a nice, you know, about 15-minute ceremony after the parade is over. The parade is, this year is going to be extremely heavy in celebrating the birthday of, the 250th birthday of the Norfolk Naval Shipyard. So our grand marshal is the commander of the shipyard, and we have a lot of guests coming, and a lot of bands in the parade this year, which we're really proud of, and a 50-flag unit from the naval shipyard. So it's going to be a great parade. From the port-related activities, I will leave that to the mayor to give in the general meeting. And economic development, nothing to report to that.
Please.
Yes, reporting on Planning Commission meeting, there was a public hearing on two items. One was the request for the Wendy's. That's going to be at the London Boulevard location. That was approved by the Planning Commission. They have some conditions that they would like them to take back to the board, I mean, the developers of the Wendy's, because of the ingress, egress, it's only going to be an exit onto London Boulevard, no entry from the London Boulevard entryway. So they have sent that, but it's approved with those conditions. And the second item was they're requesting a use permit to convert the second and the third floors of the building that used to be Rudy's Restaurant on this 467 Port Street. They're trying to get 15 apartments upstairs for an overall density of 100 units to the acre. So that was also approved. So with the Planning Commission, that's all that I have to report.
Page.
They gave my two reports, but just add on to what Councilwoman Lucy Burke said. The Wendy's was the first use of the patch that we did for the ordinance. It was the first time the patch was used. So those conditions are based on the patch that we're using to bridge the gap until the new ordinance is read.
So it's working, is what you...
Yes.
Yes.
My two committees have not met since the last time I gave update, therefore have nothing to report tonight.
Dr. Whitaker.
As far as the school board, I didn't know if you wanted to give a report. You seem to be serving as the liaison for the school board there. There was a letter that was sent between you and Mr. Perrin, and it had John Rowe's proposal. So I don't know if you wanted to give the liaison report for that correspondence.
I think self-explanatory, it's only John Rowe and not anybody else.
Okay, so that was my question at the last council meeting. So we can act unilaterally and make proposals to entities within the city under the guise of council when we're not directed to do such?
Well, that's a very interesting question. The letter reflected council's position that it was council's desire to consolidate the two OPEB funds into one, and the risk management. That message was clear from the last council meeting, and that was conveyed in that letter. And if the two OPEB funds are consolidated, along with risk management, it provides $3 million in both repurposed and new money for the schools for 2017, 2018. And the letter is self-explanatory, and we got the response.
Right. And there were other items within that letter as far as how city funds could be allocated, which I didn't realize council had given you authority to determine how city funds were allocated. I know the Sports Hall of Fame was brought up, and I thought that the Sports Hall of Fame, I thought we had concluded on that issue, and I was surprised to see it being included in a package with the proposal that you submitted.
Dr. Whitaker, I think proposal, the definition speaks for itself, and it was modified with my name, so it's me only, not council.
Right. That's my point. I'm just, I didn't realize you had been given, gotten the consensus from council to move in that direction. And so it was surprising to see what you had proposed, and I didn't know that was the arrangements that we are operating under now, that individual council members, without consensus of council, can make proposals to entities within the city.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. On our part, we had the Costco development, which is the largest ship ever to call on the East Coast come yesterday, and I'll announce that tomorrow, I mean, tonight. The governor was in town for this historic event, and we will, we can look forward to a ship that size coming to Portsmouth very frequently. In addition, Dr. Patton and I met with our counterparts in Norfolk, Mayor Kenny Alexander and interim city manager Doug Smith, in the spirit of how we can work together in the future. And we agreed that we would continue to meet, and we'll keep you posted on those meetings. We share more in common with Norfolk than we do with our surrounding cities. We're both urban cities, and we both share a common Main Street, Elizabeth River. Okay, no further business. I'll adjourn the work session, and dinner is served, and we'll reconvene the regular session at 7:00.